We have a full agenda this evening. I'll read that into the record first. We have a continued public hearing for 66 Otis Street Site Plan Review Application, a continued public hearing for 64 Otis Street Site Plan Review and Special Permit Applications, 139 Turnpike Road Circulation Plan Discussion and Possible Minor Modification to the Site Plan Approval. We have an update on Village Commons at 1 Gleason Street regarding the water line, and we have a discussion regarding the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I have a request due to scheduling conflicts to take up the 139 Turnpike Road Circulation Plan Discussion first, so we'll proceed with that. Jim Robbins, why don't you give the board a little background on this, and then we'll turn to the owner's representative?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, the site for 139 Turnpike Road, which is a shared site for Burger King, and urgent care, and a Starbucks coffee shop, has had since opening some conflicts in the circulation and parking pattern on the site. Also, emergency access has been restricted by a previously approved parking solution. So we asked the applicant and their engineer to meet on-site and discuss a possibility of improving that circulation plan. There've been modifications to the island at the entrance to prevent head-on traffic leaving the drive-up from both Burger King and Starbucks, and work-around traffic that wishes to bypass the drive-up lane, while creating conflicts for fire trucks entering the site and emergency vehicles entering the site. So we asked Fields and Thomas, who's the project engineer, to please come up with a new plan to be reviewed by town staff, and then presented back to the planning board for a de minimis change to the approval. This is a de minimis change because we're only working with the existing site. We're not changing the number of buildings. We're not even -- we are losing two parking spaces in this design, but it doesn't trigger an amendment to site plan, a full amendment, doesn't require a public hearing. It only requires a vote from the board. I wrote a motion for you to look at later that explains that. So I'd like to turn it over to Tom from --
Okay. Before we turn it over, anybody have any questions for Jim regarding -- why don't we -- Tom, why not? Pete, you're all set. Any questions so far? Pete Bouchard? I don't know if you can hear me, Pete. I'm gonna assume that's a no. Tom, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. So I'm Tom Michalak, a professional engineer with Fields and Thomas, here on behalf of Torrenken Properties, our client. And to just expound on what Jim had said, several months ago, we were asked to take a look at this, to revise the circulation on-site.
No questions so far.
And so what we did is propose a counterclockwise circulation throughout the site with the entries on Liman and Rewind. Those remain as two-way. But to accommodate that, we revised a few of the islands, so it was easier to make this right turn on Liman to run along the Burger King drive-through and continue along, or you can then either turn right onto Route 9, or continue back around to the rear of the site and exit through Liman. So you can see here, the initial submission, we had to open this up. We modified this one island back here, modified this island drive-through, and then this at the corner here. So it was really just give-and-take of where we had to expand pavement, we then had to make up for it with the open space. And to Jim's point, we had some issues with emergency access. So we worked with Deputy Chief First to accommodate his largest apparatus coming through the site. So that's really what this entails. They've already made some of the revisions out here, but what we're proposing is to make additional modifications on top of those to accommodate that larger apparatus. And what that comes down to is making this island, peeling it back a little bit more, pulling this back in a little bit more, and then to offset things with the open space. Now we're actually using three spaces back here to make up for that additional pavement. They'll still be in conformance with the required zoning requirement for parking, but that's essentially what this layout, what these layout changes entail. Similarly, we have -- we provided a little bit more room for the dumpster access for the garbage truck to come in with the head-on approach to that area. Now, we've basically coordinated with Deputy Chief First, but he signed off via email with this layout, providing -- provide some additional notes as far as snow clearing is concerned. So we have notes for this island off of Route 9. It's a concrete island that needs to be cleared because the sweat path of the apparatus would, you know, the bumper would overhang somewhat as he's making that movement into the site. Similarly, on this outer curve here, where we just have to remove a little bit more additional snow beyond the back of the curb to accommodate a similar movement. You know, say if there was a car parked here queued up for Starbucks, that he could hug this tight, his wheels stay on the pavement, but that front bumper of the larger apparatus would just swing out over the berm in those cases. So we've added notes to those effects for the snow storage, or snow removal, I should say. And, you know, throughout the site, basically, snow has to be removed to the back of the curb to ensure that there are no windrows of snow left that would hinder any movement throughout the site. And that's really the gist of it as far as the improvements that were made. We are still in conformance with the -- we still exceed the before-taking open space. We're maintaining the 38.5% open space. It was approved as part of the original ASB build. So essentially, no net loss or no net change in open space with this layout.
Good. Any questions from the board? I'm sorry, Tom, could you just give your name and title again for --
Thomas Michalak. M-I-C-H-A-L-A-K.
Pete, any questions from you, Pete?
You need signage going in?
Yes. So there will be signage to direct people coming in off of Liman Street that they have to turn right? So this will be a do-not-enter. You know, we have signs throughout the site proposed to really go along with that one-way circulation. So direct all traffic off of Liman Street, turn right, run down along Burger King. We're adding one-way signs throughout the site to ensure that that counterclockwise circulation is accommodated throughout the site, provided throughout the site. But yeah, that's, you know, we still have the main signs. We have a stop sign. There's still two-way traffic at the entries, and there's appropriate signage. There are two remain. But yeah, there is signage that's added to --
Haven't. Okay, I didn't know if you saw.
Go along with that.
Right. So in other words, if you're going into the Starbucks parking lot, you have to go all the way around the building to get into it?
That's correct. So the Starbucks parking lot, you're talking about out front?
Yeah.
Yes. And that was always the case, even with the approved plan. This section was always one-way. So it was, you know, really, the main change here is you don't have people coming in off of Liman Street and coming around this direction. You know, we're just making them turn down here along the Burger King. But this was always one-way pointing, you know, west to east.
Any other questions? We have a motion? Thanks, Jim.
The planning board finds that the proposed modifications to the site plan for special permit number 2018-2, 139 Turnpike Road, are minor in nature, are consistent with the scope and intent of the existing special permit, and therefore, a public hearing is not required. Therefore, I move that the planning board approve the de minimis modification to special permit number 2018-2, as shown on the plans entitled Number 139 Turnpike Road: Site Modifications, Exhibit Sheet 1, Pavement Modification Plan, Exhibit Sheet 2, Site Signage and Pavement Marking Plan, and Exhibit Sheet 9, Sweat Path Fire Apparatus from Breakdown Lane, all dated August 2, 2021, and revised August 2, '21, August 16, 2021, and 10/29/2021.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had one question. I'm looking at the plan here, and I don't see the third -- oh, I do. Sorry. I apologize. I saw what I needed.
Good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Pete Bouchard, I'm not sure how to do this. Do we have to get a roll call from him? He did raise his hand, but I don't know if everybody can see that.
Why don't you do a roll call vote, because the folks at home can't see him.
Okay. Pete, I'll start with you. If you could just say yes or no to the motion when you catch up to us. He's about 30 seconds behind. I think he's just, again, there he goes.
I'll start with you. If you could just say yes or no to the motion when you catch up to us.
He's about 30 seconds behind.
Yes. Thank you. Sorry about the delay.
It's okay, Pete. Tim Kaler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Hazel?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, and I vote yes to approve. That's five to zero in favor of approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bear with us with the technological challenges tonight, so hopefully, we won't have too many votes, but we'll work our way through it. All right. So next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for 66 Otis Street Site Plan Review Application. Jim Robbins, I would ask that you once again summarize where we're at on this, and then we can turn to the board for questions and the applicant for any response.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, this is about the third public hearing on this project. The last public hearing, we were trying to tie up issues so that we could move forward with an approval, and one of the issues was the multi-use path across the front. There was concern for whether or not the path should be split, having partial portion of the path behind the trees, and the other at the curb line along the front of Otis Street. You asked that the Active Transportation Safety Committee review the proposal and make a recommendation. And I see that tonight Patrick is here, Peckert McCarty is here, the project engineer. He has a updated and revised plan that was submitted to you, I believe, on the 29th of October, that showed a new multi-use path, or sidewalk, I should say, across the front with a two-foot grass strip, a seven-foot paved surface, and a six-foot easement at the back of the pavement, which would include the trees, should the trees need to be removed in the future if the B-Walt trail is installed. That would allow that. That would give a 15-foot surface for a 10-foot wide paved multi-use path, a two-foot wide grass strip at the street, and a three-foot wide grass strip as a fall area at the back of the walk. I had asked Patrick if they could increase the width to 12 feet on the easement. Patrick and I discussed that this afternoon, and I'll let him explain to you why, but they don't feel they can increase that. So I brought that to the ATSC this afternoon, and I gave you a copy of the email that came from the chairman after we met. We had a 5 o'clock meeting. At about 5:30, the board voted to accept the proposal as you've shown on your plan. So that's the recommendation from the Active Transportation Safety Committee. Other issues associated with the development were just to make sure that this multi-use path aligned with the abutting property at 66 -- I'm sorry, at 64 Otis Street. And Patrick has agreed to work with them in the future as their plans continue to build their own path at the adjacent property. Those are the primary issues we discussed at the last meeting.
Okay. Before we turn to the applicant, any questions from the board? Okay, Pete just typed in no questions, so we'll move to you, Patrick, if you have anything else to add.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering. Will and Jen Olivera are with me as well this evening, behind me, the applicants. So thank you for the summary, Jim. I agree with everything he said. We did submit a revised set of plans on the 29th, along with a detailed comment response letter, where we took the time to retype each department's list of comments and offered our response. And it's our opinion that all of those have been addressed. Lisa did just come up to me before the meeting and said there might be a couple little tweaks, but nothing of concern. And I think if she had any, she'd step up and say that. But we're respectfully hoping that the board would vote this evening to grant approval so that we can begin to move forward with the construction phase of the project. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm happy that we were able to come to a mutually acceptable compromise on the sidewalk.
No. I certainly appreciate your patience with us and trying to work that out. So I think we just have to turn to the public, because this is a public hearing. Is anyone from the public wish to address this? Okay, seeing none, I think we can motion to close the public hearing.
We close the public hearing on 66 Otis Street Site Plan.
I will second that. Any discussion of the motion? Once again, we'll do a roll call vote, so Pete can catch up. Pete, be ready, because I'm gonna do everyone else first. Tim Kaler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim Ball?
Yes.
Okay. Hazel, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Pete, when you are ready, yes or no to closing the public hearing?
Everyone else first. Tim Kaler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim Ball?
Yes.
Hazel, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Pete, when you are ready, yes or no to closing the public hearing?
Yes, to closing the public hearing. Thanks, Tom.
That's five to zero in favor of closing the public hearing. Pete, we'll be right back with you. All right. So I think at this point, we can, we have all the conditions we need for the approval. Jim can draft the final decision, but I think we can move to make a decision on approval tonight, if everybody's fine with that. And then we'll vote the final decision next week after you've had a chance to review it.
Okay.
Make sense?
Certainly.
Okay.
Can I read it?
You have a motion?
Yep. So I move that the planning board approve the plans entitled Proposed Site Plan for Cold Harbor Brewing, 66 Otis Street, Westboro, Massachusetts, dated August 25, 2021, and revised October 29, 2021, allowing the applicant to proceed with the necessary subsequent permits. The final site plan approval decision will come at the planning board's next meeting.
Second that. Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote again. All those in favor, Tim Kaler?
Yes.
Jim Ball?
Yes.
Hazel?
Yes.
I vote yes, and once again, we'll wait for Pete's vote.
Yes.
Hazel?
Yes.
We'll wait for Pete's vote.
Okay, great. Thanks, Pete. All right. So we have a decision on that, and you'll, Jim will draft that for circulation by next week's meeting. Okay?
Excellent.
All right. Thank you so much for coming in.
Could I make a quick comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure, Tim. Go ahead.
So I'd just like to thank the applicant for their patience through this process. Cold Harbor is a Westboro success story. Will decided, and Jen decided, to invest their money to start a business here. Through their growth and success, they've been forced out of their current location, and they've chosen to reinvest in Westboro. It's the role of this board to try to encourage such investment. And I appreciate your patience while we dealt with a town issue and providing you a specification for a requirement that you didn't need to entertain with by right development. So I'd just like to thank you and wish you much success in the new location.
Thanks, Tim.
Very much.
I'll just say I'm looking forward to the grand opening. All right. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for 64 Otis Street Site Plan Review. It says and special permit application, but I don't think there's any special permit with this anymore. But the agenda item still says special permit. But just so we know, just so we're clear, it's just a site plan review. All right. Jim, I will once again ask you for a summary to start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at our last meeting, as you know, we went over primarily traffic concerns with the site. We had a presentation by the applicant's consultant, Bob Micho from MDM Traffic Consultants, and that was followed by a peer review by our peer reviewer, Rob Nagy, who's here this evening from VHB. The VHB submitted their comments in writing to the planning board. The applicant's consultant then had a period to respond. They did respond, and Bob Micho is here this evening to give the board an update on his recommendations regarding their responses. Also, we talked about the multi-use path, and the applicant proposes to design the path to DOT specifications and construct it. That's very much appreciated, because that will allow them to match up with the path that we just talked about at 66 Otis Street, and extend that all the way through their properties at 54 and 50 when the time comes. We talked about many other issues that are addressed in a draft decision that you have in front of you this evening, but we'll want to get to that. But I kind of wanted to tie up anything you might have had with the traffic before we proceed on that.
Okay. All right. So you want, Jim, I'm sorry. I was reading some of my own notes on this. You want to discuss the traffic first and then get to the draft decision?
Yes, because we just received a letter from our peer reviewer last Friday, closing the issues on traffic. I just want to get it on record that we've had a final resolution to the traffic issues.
Okay. Do we want, I'd like to hear from Rob as to, from VHB, the peer reviewers, you know, the results of that, and just get a summary of where we're at on that. If, Rob, if you're okay with that. Either, either mic should work.
All right. Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Rob Nagy with VHB for the record, 101 Walnut Street in Watertown, Massachusetts. I also happen to live here in Westboro. For that, for that purpose, I'm not sure. That's important. Anyways, we had an opportunity to go through the peer review responses that were offered to us by MDM, Bob Micho, which were pretty, pretty detailed in their, in their reply. For the bulk of the technical comments, their, their responses to us were clear and were, made the, made the process much more understood for us in understanding what their impacts were. There were a few comments that we just, that we memorialized in a letter that I recognized was probably delivered to you guys today, if not yesterday. And I just wanted to go through those real, real briefly with you. But I, you know, the bulk of the review ultimately settles on the fact that there are no more outstanding technical comments related to the, related to the project. Specifically, That's pretty much the first and foremost major mitigative action out here. And what that, what that monitoring study would do would basically prove the, the impacts that were identified in the traffic study are consistent with what's happening after the, after the facility opens. And should there be a material difference in, in those findings, meaning that there's a, they're forecasting a small amount of traffic to go down towards Smith and Fisher Street, should, should for some reason, the, the actual results of the study find that there's a larger amount of volume traffic going in that direction, there would be mitigative actions that the applicant could then implement on their operations or perhaps even physically to restrict or, or reduce the impacts of that project. And that's something that I would hope would be brought into the conditions moving forward with, with this project. And I do think that that provides the town a good safety net in case there are changes to how the operations of the site works. Secondarily, we, we saw a change in the commitments to off-site mitigation. One of them, the major one being the implementation of some improvements at the Route 9 and Otis Street intersection. I think at the last hearing we were at, there was some concern about the timing and who was going to be responsible for implementing those improvements. Based on the applicant's response letter, they had taken on the, the goal of, or the objective of getting those improvements, which would ultimately result in split phasing of the Otis Street approaches to the intersection, meaning that, if you're familiar with the Lyman Street Route 9 intersection, how that operates today, one side would go, what, the Lyman Street sort of northbound would go and then Lyman Street southbound would go. And there wouldn't be any conflicting movement. So anybody who's familiar with the Otis Street intersection, if you've driven through that, you understand that that's, there's definitely some conflicts as the through traffic and the left turning traffic tries to mingle and operate together, which creates both a safety issue, which has been identified and documented in the studies, as well as an operational issue. So the applicant has agreed to take on the challenge of working with Mast Dot to try to implement that split phasing approach to doing this. Now, we, needs to be recognized that that's a Mast Dot decision ultimately as to how that's going to go forward and should Mast Dot have other conditions, that would, that would be something that I'm sure the applicant and the town and Mast Dot could work together on. But that is something that would see some significant safety benefits at that location, would certainly reduce the impact of this project on that location and perhaps even provide some operational benefits for the intersection as well that the community is, is dealing with today without the project being in place. So that's, that's a, that's a substantive change in the, in the overall project. And then the only, the last comment, the last real comment that we have on this is sort of the cross connection discussion, which we, we talked about at the last hearing, which is this site connecting to adjacent sites, which was one of the recommendations in the Otis Street planning study, is trying to connect the different sites as they develop off of Route, off of Otis Street and understanding how that might work into this site plan and adjacent site plans as they continue to get developed down the corridor. And one of the recommendations, and going back and forth with the, the applicant's traffic engineer was, you know, there's some challenges associated with that, but there was a commitment, a clear commitment from him that, that they would continue to look at those connections and where they might be able to, to be provided. So one of the things that we asked for in our comment letter was, understanding that providing an engineered plan that shows a connection to an undeveloped property is, is a challenge. If there's an opportunity to show maybe where on the plan, conceptually on this plan, on the site plan that's before you today, that connection could take place and what challenges would need to be overcome to do that, whether that's a connection towards the front of the property adjacent to Otis Street or something to the rear of the property, just to demonstrate that there is a possibility and a likelihood that, that a connection could be provided, I think would be a good faith effort towards advancing the overall, you know, commitment and goal of the, the planning study itself that was, that was put out there. So we've asked the applicant to do, you know, maybe show that on a plan again. Doesn't need to be an engineered plan, just sort of show up an area where that connection would take place and what, you know, and make sure that that's considered moving forward as the site plans continue to come forward. And perhaps, you know, the next parcel that comes before this board, you guys would be understanding of, okay, you told us that this is where the connection might make, might make sense. You know, perhaps we can talk a little bit further down the line when that site plan comes forward and before this board. So generally speaking, we're consistent. We're, I think the, the changes that were made into the traffic study and the, the clarifications that were given to us, we're, we're comfortable that, that, you know, we understand and, and now you understand what the impacts of this project are going to be. And I think at that point in time, it's really up to you to decide if this is a good project or not.
Thanks, Rob.
Any questions? I'm more than happy to, to answer them.
Any questions from the board for Rob? Pete, just type in if you have a question, okay? Bob, any response?
Yeah. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Rothstein. I have with me this evening Christine Hung from my office, John Sullivan from The Applicant Atlantic, and Brian Law from Sims Maney. We did address with Jim both points that were raised. We have undertaken the responsibility for the phasing, the split phasing. With respect to the interconnection, we've, we've agreed to a condition that the way it was articulated, I think is in reverse. I mean, when, hopefully we're going to be before you in short order with adjacent parcels. The time to look at where that connection would be when we understand where the buildings and the circulation on the adjacent parcel is, to look at it so it ties into 64. If we show it on 64, my fear is we're going to misrepresent something that you're thinking it's going to be here and we designed 54, then it doesn't work. So we've said, when we come forward with 54, if we come forward, we'll work and make a good faith effort. We commit to that. That way, we know what 54 is going to look like, 64, and to see where it makes sense. There are limitations. We're concerned about the natural resources and site circulation and safety, but we've committed to work in good faith to address those issues. We understand those. We also would look at 50 at the same time because that would be the, the piece in the middle and then we can see how it all works together. So in concept, we're not adverse to that. I just think if you tie it, if we show you theoretically where it could be on 64 and then try to back the, the design into 54, I think we're going to make a, a project that doesn't make a lot of sense. Would rather say, okay, here's 54, here's where we think we can, if, if at all possible, do that connection. So we've agreed to a condition. Subsequent, and I, I should update the board to our last meeting, we have retained the consultant to work with grant applications. And I had a discussion this morning with a very senior official of the Commonwealth who indicated that speed is going to be critical with the infrastructure money. So we took the risk and it was a little more than my client, my representation to my client, what I thought it would cost was a little more than that. But we feel that we have an opportunity to get that done now and hopefully get in line to get the funds to make major improvements on the whole car. So we've already committed to that. It's in here. And we've also committed to doing the design plans for the corridor study. So there's a lot of, there were a lot of benefits that have been put in here. And we've, we've re-articulated and re-upped the commitment to work on the trail system. And that's, that's, that's in here also. So there are a lot of moving parts and commitments on our part. We're not going anywhere, but time is not our friend right now.
All right. Rob, thank you. If you can stick around in case we have questions for you during the
Yep.
review of the draft decision.
I'll be right over here.
Okay. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. The other comments or issues on traffic before we move forward? Anybody from the public wish to address the board on this? Okay, we'll, we'll have another chance for that. But Jim, I think at this point, we might want to go through the, well, let me ask Bob, you've had a chance to review the draft decision?
Yeah.
And you're comfortable with it so far? Okay. Jim, if you could take us through...
Plus he made changes on the one hand.
I do have some questions as we go through and I will just ask the board to, I guess, raise your hand if you have a question as Jim's going through. And I'll give Pete a chance at the end of each, Jim, we'll, we'll just have to pause periodically for Pete to catch up and give him a chance to ask any questions he may have. Okay. Jim, why don't you get started on, on your, on the decision and we'll ask questions as we go.
So first, I want to start by thanking Bob and Christine for all their work on this draft decision because it was them that framed the decision after conversations that we have. So I appreciate that very much. Because of the length of the decision and a number of conditions, I'd like to dispense with the description of the plan. I think we all know what the description is and what the background is and also the documents that we've received. You'll, you'll note at the back of the decision, I have to add many of the letters that came from town review. But what I wanted to discuss this evening is to make sure that the conditions of approval are acceptable to the town and to the applicant so that you can approve this project and then allow Bob and I to make the final changes. Any edits that are made this evening, any additions from the file that we have on record to make sure that the decision is complete. Bob and Christine would work with me on that in the next couple of days to get it to the town clerk.
Okay. So Jim, I just had two questions on the existing conditions and the project description. I don't think we need to read the whole thing, but you have a section describing a portion of the lot is currently in highway business and special town meeting approved the rezoning. Do we have that in there because the AG has not approved that zoning change yet?
Well, that's one reason. The other reason is because the application originally came for both the site plan and a special permit. So that explains why
Okay.
they applied for the special permit. The special permit isn't necessary anymore, but it's kind of belt and suspenders. It's Bob's idea. Take, he can take credit for that.
That's precisely why I kept it in until the AG approves it. Once the AG approves it, it relates back. So at the time of the consideration.
Okay. I mean, I think, I think that's fine to leave it in there. I just wanted to be clear that this is just a site plan and not a special permit. And the highway business zoning, I know, I don't think it comes into play given the zoning. So. And then under the project, project description, and I don't remember, pardon me if this came up, but emergency access will be provided around the entire perimeter of the proposed building. There will be gates along the internal circulation drive to the southwest of the building to discourage commercial truck vehicles. I'm assuming the fire and police will have keys to those gates?
Yeah. Lockbox arrangement.
And that's been coordinated with them? Okay. Got, that was my only question. Sorry, Jim. Go ahead
Yeah, it's okay.
to the conditions.
So I'm going to pick it up on the conditions of approval midway through page four. The first six conditions are pretty much boilerplate. I'll go through them quickly. Prior to final certificate of occupancy for the newly constructed building, all plans approved through the planning board for site plan review with comments from all departments shall be verified through record plans stamped by licensed engineer of record and supplemented by construction as builds, which we call the plans. Said plans shall include all required landscaping utilities, lighting, plot, plan, site improvements and/or other requirements as specified in the approved decision. The plans shall be approved by the town's engineering, building, and/or appropriate departments prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy.
Add an S after department.
Thank you. Number two, there shall be no parking of construction vehicles or construction work or vehicles in the right of way on Otis Street at any time. All vehicles shall be parked interior to the site. There shall be no loading or offloading of vehicles or materials in the right of way on Otis Street at any time. All activities involving loading or offloading of materials shall be conducted interior to the project site. Should the built, number four, should the buildings on site become vacant at any time, the owner shall be responsible for maintaining active water and electric service to the building. This requirement is necessary to maintain public safety for the site and its surrounding neighbors in the event of police or fire department emergencies. Number five, lighting. Outdoor lighting owned or maintained by the applicant shall conform to the requirements of the Westboro zoning bylaw and as represented in, on the plans. The illumination level of these outdoor lights shall not exceed state maximums specified for parking areas. And I'll add that they submitted a luminary, illumination photometric plan that was reviewed by staff and, and meets our requirements.
Ask one question. On number four, I'm sorry. Can we ever put language in that the, that if the building becomes vacant, they have to be stabilized or in some...
Secured?
Secured.
Thank you. Secured. Can we ever put language in there? I wondered about that. Whether that's, care about it or sometimes they see vacant buildings or not secured. And so I always have a concern about some language in these plans. Which is secured by the only...
So for doors, portals, windows, things like that, you...
You know, that's usual or not usual.
So maybe, Bob, what do you think points of entry shall be secured?
Yeah. We have no objection to that.
Good suggestion, Hazel. Thank you. Okay, Jim, proceed.
Hey, hold on a second.
Ready? Yep.
So I'm going to pick it up on number five. B on page five. There shall be no galera light pollution caused to adjacent properties. C, new lighting installations in the parking area shall not exceed a maximum of 30 feet. And this is consistent with what they have at 50 Otis Street. However, it is higher than your typical allowance, just, just for note, that the other M's on or the other Atlantic management facility is also 30 feet. The lighting fixtures shall be full cutoff design as to prevent light spilling outside of the parking area. D, lighting mounted on the exterior of the building shall be shielded and focused downward, prevent down, prevent upward bounce or spill onto adjacent properties. Number six, stormwater management plan, operations and management plan shall identify where snow shall, will be stockpiled. Number seven, in the event that weather conditions prevent the installation of landscape materials as shown on the plans, prior to a request for occupancy, the applicant may request that the planning board accept a security bond or other performance guarantee reasonable to, reasonably acceptable to the planning board to guarantee completion of the landscape elements. The planning board will determine the reasonable value of the security. Number eight, the driveway dedicated to truck traffic shall have appropriate signage indicating that such drive is exclusively for truck traffic. Number nine, the applicant shall agree to conduct post-occupancy traffic monitoring in accordance with a scope and time, time period reasonably agreed upon between the applicant and town planning staff approximately 18 months after the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the project. If the post-occupancy monitoring demonstrates material adverse impacts directly related to the project, the applicant shall consult with the town to implement reasonable corrective traffic mitigation adjustments, which shall include but not be limited to prohibiting right-hand turns exiting the site unless, unless for local deliveries.
Okay. Can I interject on this one, Jim? This says that the traffic monitoring program will commence approximately 18 months after the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy. When I look at the peer review and MDM's response, comment 22, the proponent will conduct an annual traffic monitoring program to begin six months after initial occupancy and extend for a period of five years. The data collected as part of the monitoring program will be distributed to the town planner and will include ATR counts for a 24-hour period on typical weekday. Are we talking about the same monitoring program? Because it seems like the timeframes are different.
Yeah, you're right.
And MDM replies, the applicant in the town should develop reasonable and clear thresholds for what for what constitutes an action that requires adjustment to operational policies and/or mitigative actions. Further, clear understanding of the limits of the mitigation, mitigative actions should be identified as well as how they would be requested by the town. Do we have criteria that would trigger mitigative actions?
No. I think that the way that this condition is worded, it allows the town to decide what's appropriate. I think it would be difficult at this point to propose mitigation when we don't know what the impact would be and the type of impact. So for example, vehicles that are using on a budding street, let's say, for delivery on a small scale, like the private contractors may come with a, with a van or an SUV or maybe even a regular passenger vehicle. And having those trips on local roads divert by a right-hand turn out of the site rather than, I'm sorry, by a left-hand turn out of the site rather than a right-hand turn is far different than how we would address truck traffic. So I leave room for Bob to respond on that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please, go ahead.
And your consultants here also. What we wanted to do is stabilize the site and then work with the staff to do a post-operational traffic review. I mean, if 18 months is too long, we figured that would allow for the site to stabilize the employees or the, the individuals coming and going to understand how to get there, what the usual path was, and then to react to that.
So.
Bob, what about qualifying the language so that we had 18 months or earlier?
At the direction of the, of the staff, that's fine. Yeah. I have no problem.
So at least, I mean, I thought 18 months is a little long myself, but if we can just put some qualifying language in that would allow if the town feels that this needs to be done sooner, it can be done.
Well, okay, so the, the peer reviewer had suggested an annual traffic monitoring program to begin six months and to extend for a period of five years, so 18 months would fall in that timeframe. The response from your traffic consultant was MDM concurs with the monitoring program as described above, which will include a weekday, a weekday and Saturday periods. Again, I'm not really clear how.
Altifortia consultant.
Can I just finish, Bob?
But I will say that my experience has been if you have a short period, that you really don't, you don't focus on the major issues, but.
No, I'm just saying that I, I was under the impression from the peer review and from the traffic review that this was going to be an ongoing monitoring, not just one snapshot in time, time, eight months, 18 months from now. That, am I, am I wrong in believing that? Go ahead.
I defer to your traffic consultant.
Yep. So in, in our experience with these types of monitoring studies, if it was like a retail development that was going to, you know, open on day one and you were going to have that traffic, six months is a reasonable, six months after the opening is a reasonable timeframe to conduct that study because to Bob's point, it's, it's normalized the traffic impacts of something like that. In this particular case here with this development, it may take time for them to ramp up to full operations. So, you know, six to 18 months seems like a good window. I don't know how fast they're going to ramp up to that full operational period, so perhaps something that gives you flexibility as a, as a, as a town to sort of say, you know, hey, Amazon, are you, are you at your, are you at operating capacity now? Let's go out and study it. Or if you start to see, if you start to get some complaints from the, you know, community that too much traffic is coming down to Jim, you could then sort of, at that point in time, say, listen, we're going to, we're going to conduct that study and see how the, how the thing. So if there's flexibility is built into it, six to 18 months, I think that that's meeting the, the intent of, of what this monitoring is. I honestly don't know how fast they're going to ramp up their operation.
I have no problem, Hazel. I thought, I think that's a good comment that, and I have no problem. I think six months, I just don't know if that's long enough, but I would say 12 to 18 months and, or sooner if, if the town determines that there's a need to do so.
Well, I think, I would like a window of time rather than a specific time, only because I think we had talked about trying to do that monitoring during the peak seasonal.
Well, that's why the 18 months came in too, because you're over.
So I'd rather have a window in there as opposed to just 18 months after occupancy because if occupancy comes in December, 18 months will be a June, which may be not, again, I don't know.
Well, I tried to use the word approximately.
My speculation is that December is the peak seasonal time.
Why don't we say approximately eight to 18 months afterwards and that?
That's, that's fine.
Yeah. Or sooner if.
Yeah. My concern is that I really want the option of the town that if, right at the beginning, we run into a problem, we have the option to go and say this needs to be done now. So I prefer to put qualifying language in that way than putting a particular timeline because we've got a max of 18 months, but that means that we, anytime up to that 18 months, action.
So why don't we say instead of approximately within 18 months after the issuance of certificate of occupancy? And that gives us, that gives us discretion as to when we want that done. The other concern I had with that though is if the occupancy monitoring demonstrates material adverse impacts, I'm not sure how to qualify or quantify material adverse impacts. I would think that would be any, any traffic above and beyond what was predicted in the traffic study?
Well, the problem with that is we may have vehicles from adjacent property owners that get caught up in our count on the street. I mean, there's going to be some flexibility there, but not every car on that street's coming from our site. And.
If I may, in, in our experience, you know, the traffic engineering profession is a scientific one, but it's also a little bit of guesswork in, in how we're, we're quantifying some of these impacts. What we've done in the past is put a qualifier of some percentage above and beyond what those impacts that were stated in the traffic study were. So if, for example, I think one of the major concerns of this project is the impact to Smith and Fisher Street and how much traffic is going to be using those streets. If it's determined that, you know, they've, they've identified 15% of the contracted employees are going to be going towards that direction because of it. If, if it was determined that, say, 20 or 25% of the overall traffic was turning right out of the driveway, the employee, you know, contracted employee driveway, that would, that would be different than what you've based your decision on here as a planning board. And that may then, you know, come back to, may give you an opportunity to come back and ask for mitigative actions to, to reduce that number back to that 15%. So maybe, maybe it's by putting a percentage, you know, on that number that they've estimated 15%. That's what you're basing your opinion on.
Well, MEPA uses what, 10%?
What's that?
MEPA uses 10%.
Yeah, 10% could be a, that's why I'm using that number.
Well, why wouldn't we maybe after impacts, put a parenthesis saying generally a 10% deviation, close bracket?
Okay. You understand, I just, material adverse impacts, I'm not sure that one person's definition of material adverse impact will be the same as your applicant's definition of it. So I just want, I don't know who's responsible for judging that, and I don't want to get in an argument in these two months.
No, I understand, but we have to react to what you say. If you determine it's material and it's adverse, it could be material and not a problem too, right?
I'd be open to the idea of a greater than 10% variance. In fact, it's some, it protects you as well. We don't go back and say it's 16% fix it.
Well, that's generally what MEPA will say. MEPA will say if there's a 10% delta, but it may not be material either. You may say, yeah, there's a change, but it's not material. As, as some boards will say, those are lawyers' words.
I just want a quantifiable measurement.
No, I understand. I understand.
Is that all right? Can we just put in the 10%? Does anybody?
I would, I would be, I would be comfortable with that. And to Bob's point, that's a sort of industry standard when looking at deltas on, on what you look at from a statewide perspective. So in this particular case here, again, we're not talking about huge numbers. We're talking about the difference between 50 cars turning right out of the driveway over the course of a day and heading down towards Fisher and Smith. And to Bob's point, that may not ultimately result in some sort of tangible impact. So if the number was, say, 60, you know, cars that were, were turning that way, we could then have a quick discussion, is, is that meaningful? Does that require mitigation?
Right. And in that scenario, there's no, there's nothing, you know, just because it's 10% higher does not mean the town would ask for.
Correct.
It has to be adverse.
Mitigative, adjust, mitigation adjustments, I think is the word. We wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have to, but at least we have a quantifiable threshold where we would, you know, not have somebody saying that we, no, we don't have material adverse impacts. I don't want, I don't want to be debating what's material and adverse. I want, I want some kind of measurement there. And I think that's a simple solution, so I, I'm fine with that. Anyone else have comments? All right. I'm going to pause here because I want Pete, give Pete a chance to catch up and just hear if he has any comments on this. And then, Jim, that was number nine, and we can go back to you and start with number 10.
Thanks for waiting up for me. I just put you on pause so there shouldn't be any feedback, but you can continue moving on.
Okay. Thanks, Pete. Okay. Jim Robbins.
Sure.
Rob, thanks a lot.
So picking it up at number 10 on page five. As contemplated in the B-Walt multi-use trail feasibility study and the town's Oda Street corridor study prepared by MDM Transportation Consultants, Inc., dated September 2021, the corridor study, the applicant shall grant an easement to the town and construct a 10-foot wide shared use path along the frontage of the site, and the applicant shall construct such shared use path as part of the project in compliance with mass DOT standards as appropriate. In addition, the applicant will coordinate with the abutting property owner at 66 Oda Street to connect such shared path at property line. Number 11, the applicant will fund the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion study for Fisher Street corridor in an amount not to exceed $20,000. Payment of the cost of the study shall be made by the applicant to the consultant preparing, preparing the study within 60 days or of the earlier, I'm sorry, within 60 days of the earlier to occur of the following, the date of the completion of the study or the date of this decision. This was something that you and I discussed, and I discussed with Rob earlier about delaying this study until occupancy, six months to a year after occupancy, but I learned recently.
Yeah. Early on, when we first started the, the process, we were encouraged by the town to do this ASAP, which we've already done, so it's already been done. They're compiling the report now, so.
Okay. Well, I guess we can't change that then, huh? I just.
I understand.
My concern is that the report's going to come back and say we don't need a truck exclusion, then this project's going to be built and there's going to be more, potentially more trucks along that route, and we don't have a truck exclusion, nor do we have a study that really is based on, you know, the, the traffic from this project. So I'm just a little concerned about that.
We have an exclusion on a right-hand turn for the trucks for this project, and they control that they're coming from Route 9.
Right.
I think we know this project won't create any trucks.
All right.
And we have a baseline for the future now.
Well, we don't have that right-hand turn exclusion yet, but they're willing to consider it, right?
For the large, for the large trailers, you will.
Okay. I think that's, I'm okay with that. We'll just, we'll just move forward with that one as the way it is.
Just for my benefit, can you speak into the mic because I'm even having difficulty hearing?
Sorry, Jim. I'm okay with 11 as it's written.
Okay. Number 12, the applicant shall install the infrastructure consisting of conduits and geometry necessary for the signal at site access drive for employee vehicles as recommended in the corridor study, and will continue discussions with representatives of the property known as RK Speedway Plaza to realign the site drive on the easterly side of Oda Street pursuant to the recommendations set forth in the corridor study.
Okay. I have another question on this one, Jim, sorry. For the signal at the site access drive for employee vehicles, I thought the signal was going to be at the truck access drive, the northern one?
No.
It's going to be at the southern one?
Yeah, there were only about eight to 10 trucks in a 24-hour period.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
One clarification that Jim asked me on the way in on this number 12, the infrastructure will be done during the construction of the site, so it'll be done, conduits, et cetera.
Okay.
Do you need that clarification?
No, I'm fine. I think it's fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood which entrance that was going to be at.
Number 13, the applicant shall engage a recognized public funding grant writer to apply for the Mass Works grant or other state or federal grants to advance the implementation of the corridor study in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Recognizing that any grant application will require plans that are at least at 25% design completion status, the applicant shall contract with MDM Transportation Consultants, Inc., to prepare this required plan set at an approximate cost of $200,000. The financial obligation of the applicant under this condition is anticipated to total approximately $300,000. The applicant shall get a credit for any monies received as a result of grants received by the town to be applied toward any of the infrastructure commitments of the applicant set forth in this condition 13, conditions 11 and 12 above, and condition 14 below. I'm going to ask Bob to expand on this.
On that, we've already contracted with the grant writer, as I've indicated, and we'll be contacting Jim shortly to have a meeting with the town. Technically, the grant writer prepares the grants on behalf of the town. We will pay the cost of the, of the performance fee. And as I indicated to Jim in conversations, we want to start that process sooner rather than later, given what has happened at the state level, as well as coming out of Washington in the last week. We want to make sure that we're ready to go, so we've made the commitment, we're front-loading for a project of this magnitude, we're front-loading a lot of expenses that if this were any other project, I'd probably have my spikes on and digging my heels in, but I think we have an opportunity here in a short period of time to hopefully do some, do a lot of things very quickly. So we've taken that obligation on. To the extent that there is any credit, that the things that were, you know, are still unfunded and it is covered by the grant, we'd get credit for that. But I don't, a lot of the things I'm front-loading, preparing the plans, I don't see that, so. That suffices for an answer.
Okay. Jim, go ahead.
Number 14, which is referenced in number 13 above. Number 14 says the applicant shall advance near-term signal phasing improvements for the Oda Street at Route 9 intersection that comport with the recommendations of the previously proposed road safety audit at that, for that intersection. Specifically, this obligation will include requisite design plans in conformity with the Mass Department of Transportation requirements for split phasing of the Oda Street approach to Route 9 associated with restri, and associated with restriping of the intersection, adjustment of the signal indicators and modification of signal settings to achieve optimal signal operations. The applicant will pursue an access permit from Mass DOT for the implementation of these near-term improvements and commit to implementing, implementing the improvements subject to receipt of an access permit from Mass DOT. The financial obligation of the application under this condition shall not exceed $100,000.
I have a question about this. This does not include crosswalks.
I'm not the traffic engineer. Maybe a consultant can talk to that.
Just a typo. I think the financial obligation, last sentence, financial obligation of the applicant, not application.
Oh.
Okay, you're right.
Bob, can you?
Yeah, so, so to answer the question on the crosswalk, the, the plans would not at this point in time include crosswalks. I think the prior commitment, the prior condition, which talked about the Oda Street master plan, that would, should the, should the Mass Works grant be successful, would include upgrading that intersection. that intersection to provide those crosswalks. This really is, the split phasing really is a short-term improvement to address the obvious and clear safety issue for vehicles traveling through that. I think we all agree that pedestrian traffic through there is something that should be considered, but I don't think, when you get into that stage of design and review, you start to pull the sweater string and it's going to start to, you know, it's going to derail the split phase piece at this point in time if we're trying to get that done prior to opening of the project.
All right, Jim, 15, I think, unless, any other questions?
Nope.
Okay.
I just have a question for Bob. So Bob, if the $100,000 obligation to complete this work is not enough for some reason, will you be looking to piggyback that onto a grant application? We should probably include that with the first application noted in number 13.
That's the 14. If we get any monies.
Which is referenced in 13.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Thank you.
We will commit to the $100,000. I'm going to add the word, and I don't know why I feel I have to add it, the applicant will, the sentence above, will, with the town, pursue the access permit? I don't want to trigger MEPA.
No, I tend to agree with you on that point. Not that the project will trigger MEPA for any statutory numbers, but in the past, that sometimes has been used to bring in MEPA and could delay the project from a permitting schedule.
But we're just doing this at the request.
Put the town in there, yeah. Yeah, it makes sense.
To the extent the town can be a party to that application, I think A, it holds better weight with Mass DOT, and B, it will absolve the project from that level of...
I'm not worried about it, but I'm, don't suspend us. And I do think that, as Rob indicated, going with the town as a co-applicant will get their attention.
Yeah, I just wonder, and not suggesting that we add to this, but maybe we could see if any, like Northborough might benefit from this as well, CMRPC, I mean, if we could get...
We've already had that discussion with the grant writer that will be reaching out to Northborough because having a community compact type of program application for Mass Works enhances the speed and amount awarded, so we've had numerous discussions on those issues.
Okay, all right. All right, are we done with 14?
Yes. Number 15. The town is desirous of improving the access to and parking at the Target Ballfields. Within 180 days after the date of this decision, the owner-applicant shall, on page seven, negotiate in good faith an easement with the town on a portion of the site to expand the current parking lot for the ballfields by 10 to 20 parking spaces. The form and substance of said easement shall be reasonably satisfactory to the applicant, the applicant's mortgagee, and the town, and shall include without limitation provisions with respect to location, security, liability, signage, usage, and knowledge of the town's obligations to construct and maintain parking area if established. The town shall be solely responsible for obtaining all necessary permits, approvals, and consents required to construct and use the parking area. The applicant shall, however, reasonably cooperate with the town in connection with permitting of said parking area by signing any application and consents necessary to prosecute regulatory approval of the establishment of such parking area, provided the same does not impose any cost to the applicant, and the applicant is accorded the protection and liability under Mass General Law, Chapter 21, Section 17(c). Now, I didn't write this. Bob wrote this, so a lot of this terminology is obviously legalese, but...
Yeah, if I could just comment, the property owner is protected from liability if the site is open and you're not charging the public to go on it. That's the whole purpose of that.
And one other thing, I know that the board was desirous of the town being defined as the Westboro Little League, not the town, so that the Little League would be the one that would conduct the work, and you would be giving the money to the Little League.
Well, I think number two...
That's on the next provision, yeah.
Number two says that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Number two. Make a contribution to the town or the town's designee, i.e. the Westboro Youth Baseball, in an amount not to exceed $25,000 to assist with certain upgrades to the access drive from Target parking lot to the baseball fields. This pavement shall be made within 90 days of the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the project. The town or its designee shall be solely responsible for obtaining the necessary permits, approvals, and consents for such improvements.
Yeah, so on this one, I just, I don't want to necessarily be so specific on what that $25,000 needs to be spent on because youth baseball may decide that paving the parking lot comes first, and they want to use that $25,000 to pave the parking lot and then work towards improving the access drive. This really limits the utility of that $25,000 to one purpose, and, you know, again, I realize that the applicant isn't going to pay for everything that's done over there, but I'd like probably youth baseball to have some discretion as to what their priority is. Can we reword that?
We can work on some language there. The thing that I'm worried about for liability is that the easement goes to the town, and the town then can let the baseball use it, but in terms of the improvement or improvements in that area, or if Target doesn't...
I'm fine with the easement language for one. I just, after to exceed $25,000, to assist with, could we just make it something general? To assist with improvements to Target Fields? Something general like that?
Access to.
Well, access again, I'm not sure that covers parking.
Why don't we just say such things as access to and other...
Parking lot and fields.
Or other improvement. We'll work on some, I understand the concept.
It could be just general. I just don't want to get too specific with that because I feel like it limits the utility of that funding.
So I just brainstormed some language. Bob, tell me what you think about this. So, starting on the third line down, upgrades to the access drive from the Target parking lot and/or related improvements to the ballfields, the baseball fields.
That's fine, except if Target doesn't do it, you may want to divert that money to the ballfields, right?
Well, it's and/or related improvements to the ballfields.
Yeah, and/or, okay, that's fine, that works.
Is Target property, and I don't know, come directly up to your property? In other words, they're contiguous, so that they're going to be driving over Target onto your property?
They do touch, but I'm not sure the entire extent of the ballfields, if it's only abutting the applicant's property, yeah.
Is the town of an easement over the Target property to get to those ballfields?
Easement is granted to the town, yeah. That was actually a condition of approval when Target was developed as Costco. It was originally Costco, yeah.
In other words, they're going to be back-to-back easements, one from Target and Central Atlantic Management, together to get to those fields.
No, you have access to the fields, the Target easement. We're going to give access off of your easement for additional parking, and we're going to give you money that you can utilize in your negotiations with Target, and if they, if you don't come to closure or you can't do it, then you can use those for the ballfield.
All right, let's move forward.
Number 16. The town is desirous of obtaining an access easement or easements for a pedestrian and non-motorized bicycle use trail, multi-use trail, across the site and pedestrian trails on adjacent properties controlled by the applicant or its related entities. Within 180 days after approval of the site plan and special permit, I guess we can get rid of special permit, the site plan decision, the applicant and the town shall determine potential path connections across the site and on properties adjacent to the site, and shall cooperate with the town in negotiation of an easement for the limited purpose of pedestrian and non-motorized bike trails as appropriate, the trails. The form and substance of said easement shall be reasonably satisfactory to the applicant, the applicant's mortgagee, and the town shall include without limitation provisions with respect to location, security, liability, signage, usage, example, daylight hours, and limits as to motorized vehicles and acknowledgement of the town's obligations to construct and maintain the trails if established. The town shall be solely responsible for constructing, maintaining, and obtaining all necessary permits, approvals, and consents required for the trails. The applicant shall, however, reasonably cooperate with the town in connection with obtaining the necessary approvals from the abutting property owners and the permitting of the trails by signing any applications and consents necessary to prosecute regulatory approval of the establishment of such pedestrian trails, provided that the same does not impose any cost to the applicant, and the applicant is accorded the protection from liability provided under Mass General Law, Chapter 1, Section 17(c). The applicant shall be permitted to relocate these easements from time to time in its discretion as the site is developed.
I have no questions on that.
The only thing I would do is add where the fourth sentence from the bottom, where it says establishment of such pedestrian and non-motorized bicycle use trails, so that we make sure that...
And I'm sorry, I missed that, and...
Fourth...
No, I know the location, pedestrian.
Add the wording, where we talk, at the beginning, where it referred to as pedestrian and non-motorized.
Non-motorized.
I would just add that so that we're clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, or you could just strike the word pedestrian and say of such trails.
Well, it's the final...
I'd rather add, yeah, I'd rather add.
I think on that basis, we're going to make sure that the title's correct.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine.
Okay, I've got it. Number 17. Prior to the erection of structural steel, the applicant shall have addressed and resolved the comments contained in, number one, the tie and bond letter dated October 21, 21, to the reasonable satisfaction of the town engineer, and two, VHB Traffic Peer Review Letter dated October 15, 2021, to the reasonable satisfaction of the planning board staff. To the extent that any resolution requires modification of the site plan, the applicant shall submit to the planning board for review and approval and amendment to the approved site plan. You've already done the first one. Number 18. The applicant recognizes that the aforementioned quarter study encourages interconnection between parcels along Oda Street. The applicant agrees that when and if the adjacent property known as 54 Oda Street is proposed for development, that the applicant will, in good faith, meet and engage in good faith discussions with the then-owner of said 54 Oda Street to explore the feasibility based on such considerations as natural resource limitations, safety, security, site circulation, and financial implications of pursuing such interconnection. The applicant shall advise and consult with the planning board staff of the status of such discussions. That's the interconnection issue that was raised by our peer reviewer. Number 19. Hours of construction. The hours of construction operation, including demolition and materials processing activities for the project site, shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday. This includes the starting and idling of vehicles and machinery. Sundays and legal holidays shall be days of no operation. Operation of construction equipment by a paid contractor outside the hours specified above may be allowed by written permission of the building commissioner. The applicant shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local regulations, including but not limited to CMR, Chapter 90, Section 16a, governing vehicle idling at the site. 21. The requirements and conditions of this site shall take effect upon the filing of an application for a demolition permit for the existing structure.
That could be taken out.
Yeah, I think you don't need that. There's no existing structure. I do have...
Jim, I wanted to ask you, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I do have a question for the building commissioner on number 19. In the past, you know that the planning board allows work to occur outside of those hours, particularly on a Sunday or a legal holiday that might be a minor holiday like Patriots' Day or some other holiday, at the permission of the police chief. And the reason for that is because if it occurs on a Sunday or a legal holiday, the building commissioner isn't here. That's what the planning board normally does. However, this is written to give the permitting authority to the building commissioner, and I wanted to make sure he's okay with that.
Federal Leonardo Building Commissioner, so state that again, Jim, I'm sorry.
Sure, so...
So you want me to give permission to do construction outside those hours?
Outside the normal hours, which would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., or Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So we said that on a legal holiday or a Sunday, there'll be no work unless written permission is granted by the building commissioner. We normally say unless the police department approves it.
Yeah, that's fine. We can write that decision, and then the actual town bylaw allows the SPGA to allow some leniency towards that and approval of it. So if you want to defer that to me in my discretion, that's fine.
Makes perfect sense because there's a large piece of steel that needs to come in. Maybe better bring it in at one of those other times outside normal hours.
Yeah, again, I think it's within the board's authority to delegate me to do that if that's what you so desire, and I don't have a problem with that.
Rob, you're okay with that, Fred?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, good.
Okay. Moving on to page nine, which has come...
Jim, I just have one question on that, and it's probably not applicable because there's no earth moving, but we, on some projects, we've required street sweeping. That's normally just on an earth-moving project, or...
That's a good point. We should have a condition in here that the applicant keeps Oda Street clean, and so what we normally do is we require that the applicant sweep the street on a daily basis and that that sweeping be done by a truck that has a water...
Adjacent to the site or the whole street?
Yeah, adjacent, no, no, adjacent to the site. So you're going to have a construction entrance, yeah. The whole street would be good.
Hey, you can do the whole street.
I'm fully expecting that request.
All right, yeah, so can we add a 21A or something? I don't know which one it was.
I'll make it a number 21 because 21's going to...
Yeah, 21 we're striking anyway, so just replace that with a street sweeping condition.
Is that covered in the stormwater? Is that covered in the stormwater management? It's also in the stormwater management.
Oh, is, they require that as well? Okay, oh.
You have an apron or something there.
Okay.
Okay, one second, let me just make a note of that.
All right, I'm going to pause and give Pete a chance to ask any questions while you're doing your language on that.
Thanks, Mark. I think they should have to clean the whole street. I'm totally, okay.
All right, any other questions on the fields or anything? It's going to take another minute for him to answer that. All right, I'm going to move forward, assuming he has no other questions, but Jim, when you're ready.
Yes, and I want to ask the applicant a question. So this daily street sweeping obviously will only occur during days of construction, so you're not going to sweep it on Sundays, cannot work it on Sunday. The frontage of the site, of course, would be reasonable. Let me ask you, because I'm assuming materials will come to the site and leave from the site via Route 9 to Oda Street. I think we need to establish that, so that...
Why wouldn't we say that in other locations as necessary?
Say that again?
In other locations as necessary on Oda Street.
Okay.
Yeah. I will work on the language, but I get your drift, I understand.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying because...
No, I understand.
It's best if materials come from Route 9. You don't want materials to be hauled over Fisher Street or, you know, any of those other streets.
Clearly, if the equipment is there and it's resulting from our importation or exportation of materials, we should be cleaning it up.
Okay, we'll work on that. Bob will come, and I will come up with the language on that.
Now, on that point, can I just make one other comment, Mr. Chairman? To show you how reasonable we are and considerate we are, Mr. Zink would have been here this evening, but he's ill, and he didn't want to infect anyone here, including his attorney. evening, but he's ill, and he didn't want to infect anyone here, including his attorney. So I appreciate his consideration, so... I was supposed to have held that at the beginning, so I apologize.
Let's see. Over on page nine. Comments from town departments and consultants. We're still making sure that we have them all, so you see that items 22 and 23 are incomplete. They will be completed. Twenty-four is boilerplate, and it simply says that the planning board acknowledges that plans referred to in the decision may be subject to modification during construction. The planning board reserves the right to review any future plan changes and to modify any specific conditions as set forth in the decision.
Jim, I pause you again. You jump past 23, the public comments. There was a letter from Neil Bach on the 26th of October, addressed to the board, that Kristen circulated while you were out.
Okay, well, we'll make sure. I'll make a note of that, Neil Bach, okay?
Okay, thanks.
There are quite a few letters to add, so appreciate that. Thank you. The planning board acknowledges that plans referred to in this decision may be subject to modification during construction. The planning board reserves the right to review any future plan changes and to modify any specific conditions as set forth in the decision relative to the site plan approval. The planning board shall determine by majority vote whether any proposed modifications to the project regardless of the source of such modification requires a formal amendment to the site plan approval, or alternatively, whether the modification is consistent with the approval issued by this decision and the purposes and intent of the applicable conditions sought to be modified, and therefore, a public hearing is not required. You did this earlier tonight with 139 Turnpike Road. And lastly, this is just simply states if there's any nonconformance, that the applicant's failure to comply with the conditions stated above shall be considered violation and grounds for immediate ratification following a public hearing as required under MGL Chapter 40. We've never seen that happen, so...
All right. Any further questions? I believe this public hearing's still open, right?
It is.
So we should turn and see if there's any further commentary from the public. Don, if you could just come up and state your name and address, and you can address the board on this.
Don Byrne, 58 Flanders Road. I wanted to talk about the two conditions involving shared-use paths. The first one, while I really like it, I think we're being unfair a little bit to the applicant in that we're saying that mass DOT requirements, well, those change quickly, and I think it would be not appropriate to have an escape clause in there that says that if mass DOT requirements that fit within the easement that they're granting, and if not, that the town and the applicant would work together to decide what they're going to do. But something we literally have written that such a mass DOT, you could say, "You need to have a 12-foot-wide path," and they've given us a 12-foot-wide total space, and that's not enough, and I think you could do a little better, is what I'm saying. Much as I want to see the trail built, I feel that...
Okay.
That's a good point.
So we'll add some modifying language to give you some leeway.
I'll work with you, Mark.
Okay. Thank you, Don. What's the other...
And the second one is on the motorized vehicle. What I would suggest is rather than using motorized vehicle, use something to the effect of approved statewide guidelines or something on usage of shared-use paths, because we have the problem right now in the state that electric bicycles are motorized vehicles. And as states have changed the regs to allow electric bicycles on shared-use paths, not all of them have classified those as being non-motorized. So again, we have a situation where...
So what other language could we put in there besides non-motorized?
Could I comment on that, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Bob.
I think that one of the things that we provide for is signage and regulations, and what we can do is work on some language in the condition as to pedestrian and other means that are permitted by, you know, when you go to the beach or you go to someplace, it'll say, "The following uses are prohibited," and we could define it that way.
I just want to make sure we have a situation where if the state has been, the last three years has considered laws that change the e-bike rules, it may take another three years. I don't want to have a situation, we come back and go, "Oh, the state allows them on the paths and our conditions don't," and vice versa, and again...
But you could adapt those through your rules and regulations for the usage of the paths.
So I have a thought, though, for the...
Yeah, the words "non-motorized."
Right.
Just leave "bicycle."
Bicycles.
I'd be careful on that, because there is a bicycle you can buy right now that goes 55 miles an hour.
Well, why don't we say "bicycles" in accordance with the town's regulations or rules that you can impose?
Yeah.
We'll put that in the easement. The easement will contain that language, that "bicycles."
Right, that would make sense.
Yeah. I just felt that those two were... could be improved, and that's my total comments.
Thank you.
So we're going to take out "non-motorized bicycle." We're going to take out, in 16, we're going to strike any reference to "non-motorized."
Right, and we'll work on bicycles in accordance with periodic rules and regulations. We'll work on some language.
So for a pedestrian and town-approved bicycle use trail? Something like that?
Yeah, I'm thinking about it.
So instead of "non-motorized," "town-approved bicycle"?
And the easement will elaborate on as to what signage you can put up and what limitations.
So, Jim, that "non-motorized" is in that paragraph 16 a few times, if you...
Yes, yeah, I know, I've already circled those.
Okay.
I think the broader language here, you know, you look at the shared-use path, there may be, you know, people, one of these companies that want to go for a skate at lunch, you know, so that can be appropriate, people use scooters that they push up. The suggestion to do whatever regulations and laws that the police chief, town comes up with for the trails is appropriate. Ensures that we're aligned going forward with however we determine we want different sections of the vehicle to be used for different things, you know?
Could we substitute...
And not be constrained by describing every type of thing with vehicles that people roll around.
We'll miss it. We will not think of everything.
Can we substitute the word "multi-use" instead of "bike trail"? I mean, we take that right out, then? And then I think that relieves that...
How about "town-regulated multi-use?"
That's fine.
So that we... So that the applicant understands and the public understands that the town will be setting certain parameters, and they just won't be open to anybody who wants to, you know, run a motorbike down there or something.
That's fine.
All right, so if you're comfortable with that language, any other comments from the public? All right. I will motion to close the public hearing on the special... The site plan review for 66... 64 Otis.
Sixty...
66. Why don't somebody else make the motion, so I don't screw it up?
I move the planning board to close the public hearing for site plan review for 60 and 64 Otis Street, Atlantic Otis Realty LLC. I'll second that.
All right, any discussion of that motion? We'll do a roll call, so Pete can get ready. Tim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes, Mark.
Hazel?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Pete will vote when he's ready. We got a hand raised and a yes. Okay, we're back on track. All right, so we've closed the public hearing. We need... We obviously don't need to go through the decision again. Are we ready to move forward a vote on approval pending all the changes from today?
All right, so we close the public hearing. We obviously don't need to go through this decision again. Are we ready to move forward a vote?
Yes.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I move that the planning board approve the site plan for 60 and 64 Otis Street with the conditions stated in the site plan approval decision dated November 9, 2021, with any appropriate edits and changes discussed this evening.
Take that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. We'll do a roll call again. All those in favor? Hazel?
Yes.
Jim Ball?
Yes, Mark.
Tim Kaler?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and we will wait for Peter's vote.
Yes, Mark.
Thanks, Pete. All right, that's five to zero in favor of approving that site plan.
Thank you very much for your time, consideration, and work. If I could ask the discretion of the chair to contact Jim on two things. Obviously, to work through the edits, but maybe to set up a meeting with the grant writers so that we can start that process, and I don't know what the procedures will be in the town, whether the planning board will be involved, but if I could coordinate that through Jim, because we'd like to start that as soon as possible.
That's fine. Jim, do we need to come in to sign, or we'll just sign it next week's meeting?
As soon as the edits are made, and Bob and I have had a chance to agree on those, yes, I'll let you know to come in to sign.
That's fine.
Actually, you could sign the approval page tonight, yeah. Let's do that. That would make it a lot easier, then you won't have to come in. Because you voted to approve.
We have a meeting next Tuesday, too. Do you need it before then? That's fine, we can sign the approval page. Let's move forward to the rest of the agenda, though.
Does anyone have one on a single page? Because right now, my approval page is on the back. I have a double printed page.
Next item on the agenda, Bob, thanks for coming in, is an update on the Village Commons, 1 Gleason Street water line. Jim, Robbins, when you're ready, if you could just update the board on the water line at Gleason Street.
Sure. So I know I gave correspondence to the board as an update, what was going on with the owner and developer of 1 Gleason Street, otherwise known as Village Commons, and his correspondence with the owner, management company for Westboro Village, adjacent to connect the water transmission line for a loop between the two developments. The HOA, the Home Owners Association, for Westboro Village is meeting this week to discuss the details and optimistically to approve the connection between the two developments. The owner of Village Commons, Farouk Ansari, has acquired the necessary water pipe to begin the installation on his side. He hopes to begin that this week, I believe. Is that correct, Lisa?
He's only going to do a tie-in next week.
Next week, okay. And we await the final approval of Westboro Village to allow Mr. Ansari to do all the work connecting their project with his project out to Fisher and Gleason Street. Once that agreement has been acknowledged, I will ask the planning board to entertain an amendment to the existing special permit, noting that the waterline connection must be completed either by Mr. Ansari or by Mr. Ansari and Westboro Village, depending on how they work out their agreement. And at that time, the board had discussed waiving the requirement for the second commercial building in exchange for completing that waterline. So I will keep you apprised, and as soon as I know any further details, I'll let you know.
Then we assume there'll be a few other conditions on when we change the site plan permit? For example, the filling in where the hole is for the second building and like that to make sure that...
We would have a formal decision, a written decision. Yep.
Absolutely.
I think that would need to be added.
No, it won't just be one thing, it'll be a... We'll get everything buttoned up.
Yes, and the developers, you know, informally agreed here in front of the planning board that he would fill the existing foundation hole, stabilize Lomond Seed, his property. I think also we discussed landscaping and even a couple benches to make that a usable space, and then it would be up to him if he ever built the second commercial building, should his financial... Should the financial market for commercial uses out there change at any point in the future, he'd have that right to do that. But I will let you know how the negotiations continue as soon as I know.
We have an updated construction schedule?
You have an updated construction schedule, which I think is still lacking. The items are all as we've required, but I want some further detail on that schedule.
Okay, good. I definitely want you to follow up on that.
Are we holding any money for landscaping?
We have a performance bond for the landscaping that's required at the main project, yes.
But, of course, it's not been done.
Yeah, he notes the birch trees and a few of the landscaping details in his construction schedule.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We have a discussion regarding the master plan implementation committee.
So the board had asked me to reach out to the town in Northborough to discuss how they had recently formed their master plan implementation committee and how they began the implementation process. I spoke with Kathy Jewett, the planner in Northborough. She's recently undergone rotator cuff surgery, so she's down for the count. That just happened last week. She has agreed to come in and talk to the board. She won't be able to come next week, but she's willing to come to the next meeting in December, and she'll back with me when she's available. They hired VHB, who did their master plan as well as ours, to lead their implementation process. And informally, what I've learned is that they felt that having a third-party consultant was a good idea, particularly the consultant that did the master plan, because they're able to help the town prioritize the goals and the steps that they wish to take moving forward. Of course, you don't have any money right now to acquire a consultant, so if you chose that route, you'd be waiting until March to put forward an article for a consultant. However, in the interim, what I think you should do is have VHB in to talk about how they run an implementation process. They did our master plan, we know them. It would still be Donnie Gorisko who would be the lead person. I think it would be good to have them in in the interim, maybe before Kathy comes or maybe even at the same meeting with Kathy Jewett from Northborough.
Sure, can we invite them in?
Do you want to have them come the same evening that...
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that would be good, because then they can tell you how they're working together.
Yeah, no, I would say that's ideal.
Makes perfect sense, and I'm relaxed. If you're looking for business, there's many reasons.
Oh, right, right.
How will you hire us to do this kind of thing?
Well, there's also no guarantee that we would hire them, because I think it...
Well, exactly, that's just it.
I think Jim's trying to determine whether that would have to go out the bid or not.
Right.
And there's a good chance it would, in which case we can't guarantee they would be the winning bid. But regardless, we have a good relationship with them, and I would like to hear their thoughts on this implementation process. So I'd love to extend the invitation.
Yes, and the other thing to keep in mind, too, is that you want to discuss internally how you would put together a master plan implementation committee. And I've received a couple outreaches from people and departments that are interested in being part of that committee. So the last time that we did this, and I know I've mentioned this before, the implementation committee was the five members of the planning board plus three members at large. We used people who were not involved in the actual master plan steering committee. We used people who were not involved in the actual master plan steering committee, or as we called it, our advisory committee. You may choose a different route. You may choose to involve more people and use people that were involved on the master plan, which I think would be a good idea, because they understand what the intention was. But you should be thinking about that so that we can hit the ground running once you decide if you want a consultant or not.
Yeah, I think it's better that we hear from Kathy and VHB before we make any decisions on that, but yeah, we should definitely start thinking about how to formulate that, so. And you'll schedule them on a meeting in this...
Okay.
What else on that? Anything?
That's it.
We have minutes?
Yeah.
I know we just got some of those today.
Yes, but I did not have a chance to review the ones we got.
So, but that's...
That we have, so let's, are you all okay if we do the ones we received today?
Sure. No, I think that makes sense if you haven't reviewed them.
Yep, we've got meeting minutes from September 21 that we've all received quite a bit before today. September 28th, October 18th. Today was the 19 minutes, correct, Kristen? Today was the 19th minutes?
October 19th.
Yes, that's right. So let's not do, so I move approval for the September 21, September 28th.
October 18th, that was ten meetings.
What about the joint meeting with the select board and planning board from September 29th as well? Yes, that's a one-pager.
Yeah.
October 5th and October 18th.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? And we got a change. Do we reference the change?
That's the one we're going to put to next.
Oh, it is, okay. So all those in favor of that motion, we'll do a roll call again. Tim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, Mark.
Hazel?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Pete, when you're ready.
So the only, so the only man we're holding is the 19th?
Just holding the 19th, Hazel, that's it.
I had a few changes I was going to do.
Yes, Mark, I have.
Thanks, Pete. All right, any other business? Okay, I will make a motion then to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, I vote yes.
Yes.
Tim Ball votes yes, Tim Kaler votes yes, Hazel votes yes, and Pete will vote yes. It's some, no, Pete, I don't know how you vote, but go ahead.
Yeah, pass that back to Kristen, yeah, so she can hold it. Thank you, that's great.
Is Peter's in tonight or not?
No, it's great.
Get him at the next meeting.
Okay.
I don't know.